This conference will now be recorded.
Approve the agenda as presented. Does anyone have any questions, any changes, any additions to the agenda as presented? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the presented agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Okay, there's no other question. We'll do a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick? Rick, is that an aye? Okay, Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes 5-0. The agenda is approved. Is Chris on coming, or is...
I'll take that for Chris.
Mike, Glenn will handle this one.
I like it Glenn.
Well, the Boring Company, as you know or have seen, they've been working there. They got the sanitary sewer and the water casing in already along with the pipe, the sanitary pipe and the water pipe. They've been working on the storm sewer now, which is a 58-inch casing that handles a 44-inch, 42-inch storm. They do about a foot an hour, and this morning they had about 40 feet in. They got about 170 feet to go. They tell us that they hope to be done by Friday of this week, so I think that might be a little aggressive, but they might do it. So after they're done with putting in the storm casing and then the storm pipe through the casing, they'll start tomorrow actually, starting to do some removals around the manhole that's in Third Avenue Northwest, the sanitary sewer manhole, so that they can replace the pipe from that manhole in Third Avenue up to the manhole straight south of there in the middle of Main Street. And then depending where the Boring Company is next week, it will determine if they'll continue with sanitary sewer going to the east or towards Second Avenue Southwest-Northwest, or if they'll start on the west side of the railroad tracks and go up to Highway 1321 with sanitary. Really doesn't make any difference which direction they go. Their objective was to get this pipe in underneath the railroad tracks, which can sometimes vary elevations by just a little bit, but in sanitary sewer, a little bit can cause you a lot of trouble 1,000 feet down the line. So whether they start on the east side or the west side is not the end of the world, but once they do start on the west side, they'll get the sanitary in all the way up to 1321. Then they'll go to Water Main and put that in from the tracks to 1321, and then storm sewer also again from the tracks to almost to 1321, to the creek on the north side of Highway 1913. So right now, that's kind of the where they're at. That would be for the next couple of weeks is what they'll be working on. If that all, if weather holds for them and it all plays out like that, it should roll pretty good.
Okay, go ahead Mike.
Chris Cavan just happened to call me right at about 5 o'clock, and he indicated, as you take a look at the picture that Ken had there on the large 58-inch piping for the storm sewer, that starting tonight, they're working round the clock. They'll be working 24 hours trying to continue moving forward because the progress on this is about one foot per hour.
Okay.
So that gives you an idea. As you look down into, most people aren't able to get up and close, but this gives you an idea of what the work down in those holes or pits are that you don't get to see above ground. And while it seems like there hasn't been a lot of progress, you can see this is a slow process. And just be thankful you're not, just be thankful you're not the person that has to go inside that 58-inch casing.
Yeah, I agree. Well, let's just hope that the weather kind of keeps staying in our ballgame. It looks like we should have, you know, fairly good week weather-wise, just maybe scattered showers. So, okay.
Go ahead.
Any questions for Glenn or Mike in regards to the Main Street project? Okay, if there's not, then we'll move on to the second thing in the agenda. And Ken, I assume you're going to take this regarding Tokolski Estates?
Yes, I will. Just run through a little PowerPoint here. Switch my screens here one second. Bear with me one minute here. All right, we got the PowerPoint up for everybody now. So we have a preliminary plat review of Tokolski Estates. This is a request by Patricia A. Tokolski Revocable Trust, and we'll get right into it here. So the applicant is Patricia Tokolski Revocable Trust that applied for the approval of this preliminary plat. It's a plat that is actually only two lots that are being platted and then two outlots. The outlots make up the majority of the property being platted, but it overall is 72.58 acres in size. They are also making a concurrent request for annexation and then rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment, which will be our next agenda item here tonight for the rezoning and the comp plan amendment. About those two lots that we actually have that are being platted within this current preliminary plat, one has an existing home on it. The other will not have a home on it, but it currently does contain the septic system for that home on the other lot, and we are going to have an easement put in place in favor of the lot with the home on it so they can continue to use that septic system. And there's a date in the future, obviously when further development happens in this development where city utilities will be extended, but just to get utilities to these two lots that are being planted is not cost-effective. So this is the best way to let them to continue to use that septic system that is in place on the property and allow the plat to occur. Basically, they're trying to split off this home from the larger property and sell that, and then whether the applicant sells this to a developer is yet to be seen, but setting it up for future development. And this is the best way they could accommodate that. On the concept sketch for the preliminary plat, and we're not approving the concept sketch, we'd just like to see at the preliminary plat stage for outlot, future development, how it conceptually could lay out. And they do show additional 42 lots on that concept sketch. And again, those are just for conceptual purposes. We did obviously run it by the city or county engineer because of the Butts County Road 29, and then First Avenue is also a county road, and they just basically made the comment that they'll need to review it further for accesses in the future if they're both still county roads at that point. And then we reviewed it just from a conceptual standpoint for general layout, and there's some things they need to change, but just wanted to show you that there is potential for, you know, somewhere in that neighborhood of 40 additional single-family home lots. We did have a public hearing on this item at our planning commission meeting in July on the 22nd, I believe, and so that was pretty uneventful for the hearing. We did have one comment for the rezoning, and we'll get to that when we get to that agenda item. And ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval on a 3 to 0 vote to forward the planning commissioner, the preliminary plat to the council here tonight. So take a look at the overhead. We've got, the outline in blue is the 72-acre area included in the preliminary plat. The two lots outlined in red are actually the two lots being platted at this point, so only the two lots being created. The one that contains the home that exists, and then a lot to the north of it that has a septic system on it. So actually pretty basic plat, not too much involved in it. Majority of it is outlot for future development, and some of the outlots, an outlot B is actually just floodplain and wetland area, so really undevelopable.
Hey Ken, I just have a question. Everything north of the blue line, is that all already in city limits?
Yeah, so the yellow line, thanks for pointing that out Chuck, the yellow line is actually the city limits line.
Okay.
Kind of highlighting here. So they actually only need to annex not quite the south half of the property that they're planning. Everything else is actually already annexed.
Okay.
So going on to the next map here, this is showing the concept layout, which they're calling Outlot A, which would be the land that's actually developable for the lots. Again, there's a few issues with access spacing and other things on here, but it was just to show that there could be future development there. We haven't looked at utility connections in any detail at this point, other than conceptually, we can get sewer there. So beyond that, the two most important features are the two lots being platted, Lot 1 with the house on it, and then Lot 2 that would have an easement in favor of Lot 1 so that that septic can still service Lot 2. And again, the applicant's intent is to sell Lot 1 off so they can have that sold and gain the assets back from that sale. Outlot B, as you can see here, and we'll show you on another slide in a second here, Outlot B is basically floodplain and low area, and we'll show you that in a minute. But before we do that, here's a zoomed-in version of that concept. So pretty basic layout there showing here again, things will certainly change in the layout, but can accommodate some additional lots. The map here that we're looking at shows development constraints. So we have, everything in gray is floodplain, and then some of the areas that are also kind of have the other pattern on the inside, I'm kind of highlighting here in areas are not just floodplain, but also were delineated wetland. So basically, everything in the gray area or in a wetland is undevelopable for single-family residential type use. So you can see why they left Outlot A as the only real developable area here, just because Outlot B really was largely undevelopable just due to the floodplain wetland conditions. So everything's going to be really on that west side. And if you go out to the site and will see it in the photos, this is the high point of that ground, and it drops off pretty steadily to the ditch area, and the railroad are kind of sitting at the bottom of that. Couple of things just to point out in the drawing here, we have the boundary of Southside Park, kind of shown this green dashed line here. The park board did review the preliminary plat as is part of their duty as park board members to review preliminary plats. So as it relates to Southside Park, we had in our comp plan these green lines, which are future trail corridors, one kind of following the open ditch area through this development, then the other one along the north side of County Road 29. Now, obviously, at this point, they're not doing any actual development on Outlot A or Outlot B. We just had the planning commission review this to provide feedback on if a trail should go through this area. The planning commission determined there should be in some fashion, talked about some possible wetland enhancement and restoration that could occur in some of the floodplain and low areas where development won't happen. And obviously, we would very likely not take a full park dedication for floodplain. We can take a percentage of it if we would choose to at that point, but really, the only decision in front of the council tonight for parkland dedication, and as recommended by the planning, or the planning commission and park board, was to take parkland dedication payment for these two lots that are being platted now instead of land, because we don't need land from this two-lot development at this point. All the other land will be dedicated when Outlot A and future lots are developed. So we'll actually have a development agreement we'll bring forward to the preliminary, or with the final plat at that point outlining future parkland dedication and other development fees. So you'll see that before we read to the final plat stage. So ultimately, staff's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat of Tokolski Estates, which is the two lots and two outlots at this point, and that would follow the findings and conditions and then the notable items in the staff report. So this is a little different than before. We, in the past couple of years, we've mostly had preliminary and final plats together, and when we do those together, we typically have a resolution approving the final plat. Well, tonight, we only have the preliminary plat, and all we need is a motion to approve preliminary plat. So that is ultimately the action we're looking for tonight is a motion for the preliminary plat. And then at the time of the final plat, we'll bring back the final plat, we'll compare it to all the conditions that would be approved if you approve it here tonight, and make sure that they've checked all the boxes. But before we do that, we do have a couple of photos to run through. So if anybody's been down First Avenue, you've likely seen this home that's off to the west side of First Avenue Southeast. It's kind of hidden largely by these large arborvitae evergreens. And then the lot directly to the north of it, abutting the standard property, contains the mound septic system, and you can kind of see that in the photo here in the little break in the tree line. Those are really pictures of the two lots that are being created. Other properties here to show you, this is just a view looking south towards County Road 29 and the intersection of County Road 29 with First Avenue. This photo here is looking back towards the existing home and the other lot being platted. And you see most of it is all agricultural at this point. This photo is looking to the west on County Road 29. And you can see again the agricultural use right now, and then it drops down in these next photos where we're looking back to the east. You can see how low the area, and they're actually farming most of the wetland in the floodplain, which is okay to do, but it does get, obviously, in big rain events, the water does infiltrate that area. But you can see how the elevation comes up quite substantially from the low point. I'm standing near the open ditch area in these photos looking back to the east. You can see that in this photo here, too. It's an extensive elevation change, so development would remain for future lots at a much higher point than the ditch, which is floodplain. Just a final couple of photos here, just showing that open ditch area as it crosses under County Road 29. You can see there's some potential for aesthetic type situation there if accepted as park board or as a parkland sometime in the future, then the trail, which would come through, somewhere through the area here in general terms. Final photo here, you can see that that west boundary line of property here is the railroad, and I actually happened to get the train crossing County Road 29, so you can actually see pretty well where the train goes through there. And then the final photo on the bottom just shows again the railroad as that west boundary of the property being planted. So I think with that, I can turn it back to the planning or the city council here tonight, and I'll just leave up the preliminary plat drawing for any questions that you may have.
Ken, I did notice in minutes about someone talked after the meeting and had questions regarding this, you know, why would you change it to residential rather than industrial with the railroad spur access there? But based on this, what I see, you really won't be able to build right next to the railroad anyways, correct?
Yeah, so that was actually an item on the comprehensive plan and rezoning item, which is the next item, but it's worth talking about now. You can see the elevation change on, you know, the railroad's really the low point, and you have two points where the elevation is going from, we'll just say the high point at the corner of Highway 21 and 13 and 29, and then going back east towards the railroad. It drops off a lot. It's a really big drop. So you wouldn't have any ability to have a building that would, you know, be adjacent to the railroad. There's just not enough room with the way that elevation drops off there. And then with all the wetland and floodplain area in the area, it's just not, it's not conducive to it. And looking back at the comp plan adjustment from 2012, when we last updated the land use plan, we had actually carried forth the information from the 2004 comprehensive plan amendment, and we did not have the benefit of this elevation data or the floodplain data. This is actually utilizing the new floodplain information that FEMA is working on with DNR and Surer County. So it's up-to-date accurate information showing the boundaries of the wetland, and then obviously, they did a wetland delineation. So it's very limiting, you know, what you can do with this land on the west side of the railroad. But no, you're exactly right Chuck. The comment was made at the rezoning following the hearing, wondering why we're suggesting keeping that zoning or making that zoning residential even across on the west side of the railroad, and it's really due to development constraints.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Ken regarding the preliminary plat of the two lots?
Here, I have a question.
I'm here, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
That, in case anybody from the council is wondering, and Ken, you may want to just briefly touch on it, is this preliminary plat is technically outside the corporate city limits. You want to talk about the reason why we still have to do this even though it's not within the city limits?
Yeah, so the reason we do this like this is the city has extraterritorial subdivision review regulations in this area. So even if we weren't annexing it, we'd still review any splitting of the property, but in this case, it's to help get information, obviously, running on the plat and the rezoning before the annexation gets submitted, and we have discussions with the township because you weren't going to rezone it and be anywhere near accepting of the plat, they probably wouldn't annex it. So it's kind of the first step in the process for us here, so.
Is this Lanesboro?
Lanesboro Township, correct.
Okay, Lanesboro, okay. Anyone else have any questions for Ken on the letter A? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the two lots and the two outlots on 75.28 acres.
This is Maggie. I'll second. I wanted to add, though, that there are some findings and conditions and notable items that also need to be included in that motion.
Yes, please include all the items from the report that I referenced.
Okay. So who made the motion?
Maggie.
Maggie, okay, Maggie made a motion with all the conditions and everything we got on the report. And any second?
Rick here, second.
Okay, we got a second by Rick. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call. So Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the preliminary plat has been approved 5-0. So the next one regarding the comprehensive plan.
All right, I got the right one up here. All right. So next item is the preliminary plat, or excuse me, the rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment for the area that we just looked at with the preliminary plat. And we'll run through this for the council's benefit here. So this is the same applicant, obviously, the Patricia Tokolski Revocable Trust. And this plat really goes hand in hand. We could have this one before the plat, we could have this one after the plat, so they kind of go hand in hand. But we have this one particularly looking at land in two different cases. So item number one is that they're looking to rezone the land that would be annexed, which is basically all the land west, or excuse me, east of the railroad, west of First Avenue, and north of County Road 29. I'll highlight this better on the map again, but they want to rezone that once it's platted to RL90 single-family residential. That actually 100% would match what the comprehensive plan has it guided as. So there's really nothing controversial with that at all. So all the land in the plat would match our comprehensive plan as they're proposing to zone it. Just that when we annex property, we have to give it an official zoning, and this would do that once it's annexed. So we actually wouldn't probably bring the second reading of that rezoning ordinance to the council until property's annexed, obviously, but this would get the introduction going here tonight. Part two of the request is regarding land on the west side of the railroad, and specifically is the applicant that owns the land on the west side of the railroad as well looking to re-guide the development of that area, even though they're not proposing to plat that at this point, but future development to re-guide that from industrial, which we had in our conference plan, to residential. They only were indicating a small portion right on the corner of 29 and Truck Highway 13 and 21. When staff reviewed it, looking at all the topography and other wetland and everything in the areas, we felt that that should be expanded actually further to the north along 21, and we'll show you the reasons for that as we get into the maps here. But staff kind of amended their request from the developer to expand the area for the regiding. And ultimately, we are bringing a recommendation from the planning commission to re-guide everything west of the railroad as residential type development.
Off far north.
Off far north, so go right up to, and we'll show you on the map here, right up to some land that actually Palmer Welcome owns on the south side of Fifth Street Southeast.
Okay.
So let me run through one of the things. So regard the comment that we did receive outside of the public hearing, but still at the public meeting for the planning commission, Mark Verhoeven, a Lanesboro Township supervisor who happens to also live directly south of the area being platted, he was the one that asked why the rezoning should occur, and that's when we talked about the topography and low area for where the railroad actually sits in comparison to that property. And then he also brought up that some of the land on the west side of the railroad likely would not be allowed per MINDOT to have access directly on the highway. We obviously don't have a development in front of us, so MINDOT has not reviewed that question, but he is correct. MINDOT likely would not allow direct access from the land on the west side of the railroad to be allowed, but that's a future discussion that really would need to take place if and when that property is ever platted. But that's also kind of lends itself into the question of if those were commercial industrial lots, would MINDOT even allow the access there? And it's not likely they would allow a bunch of driveways there. So it kind of goes to the point of, another point of why this should be reguided. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval of the comp plan amendment and the rezoning on a 3 to 0 vote. And I do want to point for tonight's action, a couple of different things. The comprehensive plan amendment would require a four-fifths vote in the affirmative to re-guide the land from industrial to commercial or to residential, and the rezoning just is a simple majority on that rezoning ordinance. So with that, we'll get into the maps here to provide a little better detail. So again, the two kind of separate requests. Number one, the red is the rezoning ordinance that would zone this property once annexed into the city to single-family residential. And that matches the conference plan, really nothing controversial about that. Everything matches up well. West of the railroad, and this provides more of the details. So the applicants are only requested to re-guide the area that I'm outlining here. That's kind of in the dashed red line. The purple color is the industrial. You can see, we also have in our plan industrial south of 29 that includes the old Malins Articlet, which is now City's Edge Collision, Pete's Repair, and then a mini storage, among other things down there. We're not proposing to change that. That's obviously industrial right now, and we think that should stay guided that way. But this area in the corner, you know, it's a nice wooded lot. The topography wouldn't allow a very large industrial building, if any, just due to the slope, and that goes down the railroad there. So that's what they requested. Staff expanded it to this area that's already in city limits and has already zoned RL90 single-family, but we had it so it could be an area that could be rezoned per the comp plan as a redevelopment area to B3 highway commercial. Now, again, you have very little land in this area that could actually be developed commercially, and it's much more conducive to residential development. So that was really the idea there, that this land is just So that was really the idea there, that this land is just very restricted by what we've got going on there. So to keep it as a future redevelopment area where it could be rezoned commercial or industrial, this doesn't make a lot of sense because there's not really any ability to do that with the development constraints. So we'll go to the map here. So basically, right up to the south edge of Palmer Welcome's property, which is way up here, is kind of the north edge of where we're looking at re-guiding, whoop, let me go back here, at re-guiding the property. And that's all floodway, it's not developable. The only little bit, you could maybe get a little cul-de-sac area of homes in here, even that might be a stretch upon further review, would be this area here. Everything else, again, is floodplain, wetland, and then you've got your high ground within the trees. So, you know, it's just really not very conducive to industrial and/or commercial development. So that was the rationale for the rezoning, and planning commission agreed with that rationale for the regiding in the comp plan. So again, what we have in front of you is that resolution that would approve the amendment to the comp plan that needs a four-fifths vote, so part of the five approving that resolution in the affirmative. And the second part is the introduction of the rezoning ordinance, which again, matches the comp plan, no change there, just have that introduced. And that would be brought back once the land is properly annexed and we would get that ordinance adopted. So a couple of photos here of the land for the rezoning. This is at Highway 1321 here, and then Conner Road 29 off to the side. And you can see the high point of the land is obviously where the trees and woods are, and it drops down significantly to the railroad. Bottom right photo here, you can see the elevation drop from basically the Conner Road 29 being the top of the hill and that wooded area, you can even see the elevation change on that photo here, then down to the floodplain area. And this is looking out over that little bit of development area that maybe could have a cul-de-sac of homes in here off of 21 in that area. And then you can see from the railroad looking up to that property, the significant elevation change. So again, it's very, very limiting in industrial type use. You've also got residential homes directly across on the west side of 2113 as well. So to kind of keep the core area, you know, north of 21 or 29 west of or east of Highway 2113, and then west of First Avenue is residential, really just kind of keeps it a cohesive residential neighborhood. And that is what staff and the planning commission are recommending here tonight. So put up the map of the requests again here and open it up for discussion.
Okay, any questions for Ken on first, the resolution to approve amendment to the city's comprehensive plan? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution to approve the amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, future land use and re-guide property. Is that you, Sean?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
And I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or issues or concerns, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Is that an aye, Rick? Nod your head.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck is aye, so that actually passes 5-0.
That's an aye.
We're going to give you placards, and then you can just put them up if we can't see your lips move, you can get a...
Aye.
Okay, next, letter C, introduction of the ordinance number 318 rezoning property. Does anyone have any questions or issues to have Ken to address to Ken on this? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the introduction of ordinance number 318.
Second.
Second by Sean. Any other questions or items on this item? Okay, if not, Maggie?
Aye.
Rick? Okay, I got a thumbs up. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 5-0 also. All right, thank you, Ken. I guess you're going to take the next one off, will?
Yep, another PowerPoint.
You must have been busy with all the PowerPoint.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Are you getting ready for the next vote already, Rick, or what?
Must be a delay on his audio.
All right, so next item is a request for another fence height variance, this time from Bob and Kelly Connolly. This would be a fence height variance along Second Street Northwest. To give you a little background, they reside at 214 Eighth Avenue Northwest. They're applying for the variance to allow a six-foot-tall privacy fence, as it would be over the four foot tall within 30 feet of a road right of way, very similar to one we reviewed last month. In addition to that, they would also like to extend their fence on the south side of their property to the front edge of their home, and we'll show you what that means on the map here. But that also is normally not allowed by the code. And the reason they would like to have the six-foot-tall fence for a couple of different reasons. Number one, for their dog, to have a safe and secure area for the dog. Number two, for privacy reasons, again, being on a corner lot. Corner lots generally exposed much more than a lot that is not a corner lot. And then finally, for an in-ground pool that they actually just applied for a permit for. So those are the three reasons for the six-foot-tall fence that they're looking to put up. Without the variance, again, very similar to the one last month, they have a roughly one-third area of their backyard that they would not be able to have fenced in a six-foot-tall fence. And what they're looking to put up is actually a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence made of one-by-six boards that are actually butted up against each other. So it would be essentially 100% opaque, so provide good privacy for them. We didn't have any public comments at the meeting on July 22nd, so we'll get into the photos here. So I'll give you a little view, they're really kind of on the edge of the shard and development on the west side of town, right before you get to Raven Stream, there's an undeveloped farm field in their backyard. I could not find a layout of how these lots to the west would lay out, but again, the house behind them would very likely face directly to the west, and their backyard would have but this one. So again, very similar to the request we reviewed last month with the planning commission for the fence variance over in Raven Stream Village. The request specifically that they're making is to have their fence located in the yellow dashed line. So you see where I have the green line here, this whole area between the green line and their property line along Second Street, that's what they would not be allowed to fence in without the variance. In addition to that, they're also requesting to bring the six-foot-tall fence to the front corner of their south side of their home. You can see, normally, we only allow six-foot-tall fences to the rear corner of the home on the side, so they'd be gaining this small area here. I don't see any issue with that. You have another home directly to the south there, this would just provide, obviously, to close in that area, and we'll see that in the photos here in a minute, just to enclose that whole backyard area for them. Here's just the schematic of how that area, I've kind of X-ed out the areas that wouldn't allow their six-foot-tall fence areas, so you can see a little more clearly. So the two areas that would be allowed if the variance granted here tonight. And then the proposed pool location is as shown here. So this opens up a little more area, obviously, in the corner side there for usable areas, particularly with that pool, you know, that would be using up a lot of the backyard. So the fence variance would help them have a much more practical use of their yard. Staff and the planning commission recommended with a three to zero vote to recommend approval of this fence variance with the six findings contained in the resolution that are in the packet. And we'll just do a couple of photos here for you. It's supposed to be a side of the home, it would go, the fence would actually come out just beyond this tree here, extend to the back property line and then over. So you still have 16 feet of boulevard between the curb and the edge of that fence, so it's not like it's right up against the back of the curb or anything, you have 16 feet there yet. Photo on the bottom here just shows the backyard, their pool would go kind of behind the deck in the patio here. And the final photo, the fence would come off the front corner of the home and then to the back. So kind of give you a little visual there of how that would lay out. Just a couple of final photos here for you. Obviously, the playground is no longer there, but their pool would go in that area, so fence in the backyard, give them a little more usable private area. So with that, I'll turn it back to the planning commission, if you have any discussion on it.
That's fine. Does anyone have any questions or issues that they'd like to address to Ken?
This is Maggie. Is typically a four-foot high fence required for an in-ground pool?
Yes, a four-foot-tall fence at minimum is required.
At minimum, okay. Then we seem to be getting a number of these requests, especially for corner lots or the backyard is on a street, to, you know, install a six-foot-high fence. Is this something that maybe the planning commission can take a look at as far as our code is concerned, if there can be maybe something added to provide, you know, us not having to approve it each and every time, but it would be at the discretion of the planning commission perhaps?
Well, if you bring up that type of discretion, it's usually not something that can be left up to the planning commission as a recommending body. So we had actually had the discussion before, I think you were on the council, Maggie, when we had a number of variances, I think about three or four years ago. And the planning commission did recommend an amendment to be brought forward to kind of avoid the majority of the variances coming forward to the council. And the council at that time determined they wanted to keep discretion in their court, and obviously, there's a different makeup of the council now. But so we actually have gone through that, and I actually do have some language that could cut back in a number of these variances. But, you know, it's really a call to the council if you'd like to see something brought back forth for discussion again. But the council, at least three, four years ago, wanted to keep these under the review and look at them on a case-by-case rather than have some rules that could be determined by staff, which is how basically the alternative would be.
Okay, all right, yeah. Well, thanks, but I wasn't around three or four years ago, but my aura. So it was just a thought, because we seem to be, you know, I think this is the third one this year that we've had.
Yeah, and I think it kind of went that way three, four years ago, too. We had, I think, about five in a year, and then we didn't have any for a couple of years, and then, so you never quite know, and that kind of goes with any variance. If you had my opinion, I think it would be worthwhile looking at a change, but then, you know, there are corner lots that can be so different from each other. So, you know, I'm okay, I've thought about this a lot, I'd be okay with keeping it where they have to get a variance. Nobody's had a huge issue with obtaining one. And it really comes down to, is the lot unique, and is there a practical difficulty? And I think it's easy enough to prove up if they truly do.
Okay, how does anybody else feel about it on council?
Well, I think, I recall the reason why at that time the council decided to keep the authority within the council is because of the uniqueness of each one. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, at that time, we wanted to make sure that, you know, these fences weren't coming up on maybe on intersections and things like that, you know. So I think that was the mindset of the council back then. Now, granted, you know, next year, it'll be a new council, a different council, you know, that's something if you guys want to discuss then, you know, I think you're more than welcome to look at that if you continue to get a lot of variances. Like Ken said, we had a spurt of a few of them, and then like for two years, we haven't had any, and then, you know, now you get two or three of them again, and who knows, you might not see them again for another two years, so, but...
Well, thanks for the insight.
Okay, any other questions?
I think we, I think we set a precedent.
I think once you approve these, you know, it is, gets more difficult to not approve them. But, you know, like I said, every situation is unique. Now, if you did it on a, an intersection might be a different variant, you know, different situation and things like that, but so far, the ones we've looked at have not been in that situation that the possibility of an intersection causing maybe some sightline issues, but even a four-foot in a car is tall enough. Now, Ken, the four-foot around a pool, that is a city ordinance, correct?
It's a city ordinance, correct.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the variance for a six-foot fence around the Connolly property.
This is Rick and Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah. Did you make a motion, Rick?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, Rick made the motion, I got a second by Sean Ryan. So if there's no other comments or questions? Okay, Maggie?
Aye.
Rick? Okay, I saw your lips move. Okay, thank you. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that variance passes 5-0. Mike, you're taking this, or is Patty taking this one? Mike, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
I thought that was the Patty version, you were going so fast, it was done.
Well, I am going to give you the Patty version, just because tonight, that I don't want to disappoint her attendance here tonight, that in simple terms, with the 2021 municipal contribution to the Fire Relief Association, as outlined on Form SC20, the proposed contribution for '21 is $0, which is the same as what we contributed this year, and is the same or what we've contributed the, since 2015, we have not had any required municipal contribution. There has been no change in the fire pension benefit since 2017. They are not proposing a change for next year under what you have in front of you. And so in simple terms with that, or that's as simple as I can make it, that there is no contribution. And as such, your only action tonight is your formal review and acknowledgement of receiving the Form SC20 from the Fire Relief Association. And I guess with that, if you wanted me to go into any questions, I would attempt to answer them. This is the same annual report that we get every year. The piece that is kind of enlightening at this point, if you go to page six, is that under the projected assets for 2020 with what they had coming into the year and what they receive, and what their estimated 2020 accrued liability is, is that they have... and what their estimated, uh, 2020 accrued liability is, is that, uh, they have a deficit of, uh, about $13,000. So financially, uh, they're in, they're in pretty good shape.
The only thing I think, uh, Mike, uh, Bruce Bartizal's name, last name is spelt wrong.
That's been, that's been pointed out and they're attempting to get that corrected.
Okay. I like the, the new spelling. I'll have to talk to him about that, see if we can change his name to Bartizal.
I, I would however, point out, uh, that if you go back i- if you go back to the front page, um, and, and this is reflective of firemen in place as of December 31, 2019, effective for 2020. And then the look ahead, if they stayed in place going into 2021, uh, you can see up at the top, uh, what the annual difference would be under our current benefit program. And they're not projecting any change for next year, but that doesn't mean that they won't come to us next year in 2021, uh, with possibilities of discussion, uh, of considering some type of change to the annual, the annual benefit level, uh, which is pointed out a little bit ago, uh, really hasn't changed since 2017.
Yeah, I think they're due. I think, uh, well, I think next year they definitely will come to the table or want to come to the table, but we'll see.
But I tried to, uh, to try to point out where the numbers are coming from, uh, to give you some idea that, uh, uh, the one I had this year that was new to me is the calculation of the, the interest or the dividends on their assets, uh, for the year. How do they calculate, uh, about sticking a number in there? Uh, apparently the state has a formula uh, that they're allowed to use to, uh, to do that calculation. So they just didn't pull it out of the air. They've got three projected payouts this year here in 2020. Um, I think two of them have been paid out with still one yet to go. They, they have to be age 50 to receive, um, their payout of their benefit. Uh, technically they have to be age 50, uh, and, uh, the full benefit is 20 years. Uh, but they're eligible for a pro rata benefit after 10 years.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mike regarding this form? As Mike stated before, that this is a, an annual form that we have to do. And, uh, I remember some of the early years, uh, of my mayoral, uh, duties, we did have some payments that the city and the rural department did pay and, and at this point, we're at a 50 50 split with the Rural Fire Association. Um, so anytime that there's a negotiations going on, on the pension amount, annual pension amount, we usually have, uh, a couple of representatives. I think Sean and I were representing the city and then there were some, uh, township, uh, members on the rural board, uh, representing the rural, uh, that sat down with the fire department. So just to kind of give you a heads up, that's, uh, usually how the format goes when they do come to, uh, the city, uh, requesting a, a review of, of the annual amount. So anyone have any other questions? Well, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the Form SC 20.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass. Is there any other?
Second, Rick here, second.
Oh, we got it already, Rick. Uh, so is there any other questions or comments? If not, Maggie?
Aye.
Rick? Is that an aye, Rick? Yep. Okay. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck is, so that passes five zero. Next on the agenda is the grant for a electric trimmer.
Yeah, I'll take this one. Um, worked with, uh, Jim Caligiri to help him get this through. So we have a MPCA Alternative Landscaping Equipment Grant. That's a 50% grant, uh, towards a, a match, uh, grant, uh, new cordless electric trimmer for the Parks Department. This would replace one of our four, uh, gas trimmers, uh, with the electric battery operated one. Obviously the, uh, goal of the grant is to reduce emissions. Even though I find it hard to believe there's too much emissions from a single gas trimmer, but they still are awarding the grant. And, uh, these are used, uh, about every other week for, uh, all five days of the week that they're used. They're a very critical piece of equipment. Um, the system that, uh, we put in the grant application and they are willing to provide funding for is the steel, uh, combi system. It has a backpack battery. And then it has a, uh, powerhead with, uh, different, uh, trimmer ends and other tools you can put on the end of it. Um, you can also, uh, with the backpack battery system, uh, get chainsaws and other things in the future that it's to be determined at the Park Department to go that route, but, uh, this would be a good piece of equipment. Uh, the battery life on these is very, very good. There'd be no concern with running out on any given day with that. And, uh, we would recommend to, uh, accept the grant, uh, in $696.96. And, uh, the cost with the grant is no more than getting a, um, gas replacement. So thought we'd give it a try and, uh, see how it goes.
No, I did notice that you have to take one out of, one unit of service and destroy it or whatever.
They want a photo with a, uh, hole drilled through the head, basically.
Okay. Any, uh, any questions for Ken on, uh, regarding this grant?
My usual. I'm sure, uh, we don't have a lot of say in the grant agreement, but has anyone reviewed this? Um, that's just what?
Uh, I, I sent it to him and I said, I don't want any significant time spent on it. It's for $700. I'm not going to worry and lose a lot of sleep over a $700 MPCA grant. But, uh, if we had to, is I'd give the machine back to them, except we own half. I'm not going to spend as much as what the grant is as to what the legal would cost me to get it reviewed to the extent that we, we'd normally review it. So I said, do a cursory scan and nothing more.
Okay. Yeah, I've read through it. Um, no major concerns, little, little something about the intellectual property, but other than that, I'm, I was okay with it.
It, it's more difficult in this one, Maggie, as you can well imagine, that, uh, all of the work that they're putting us through for $700 on this grant agreement, although I know this is a model that they're using for others that may have far more dollars than we have in ours. But the work is essentially the same and, uh, it's, it's like they say, there is nothing free in life.
Did we have, uh, replacing a trimmer in our budget? Just if, again, it's only $700, but.
Yeah, Jim Caligiri had it in the budget to get a new trimmer anyway.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the grant.
Move to approve.
All right, Rick's on it. I like it.
Boo.
I'll second that. So I got a motion by Rick Siler, second by Chuck Nicolai, um, to approve the grant for the electric trimmer. Is anyone have any other questions or comments at this time? If not, we'll take a vote. I got, uh, Maggie?
Aye.
Rick? Rick says aye. I could read his lips. There you go. Thank you. Uh, Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes five zero. Thank you. I think you're done for a while now, Ken, aren't you?
Yeah, I think I am.
Uh, you could have passed that one on to Glenn, you know, he really didn't have much to do today.
I was on a roll.
Okay, next, uh, who's taking that one? Patty? No?
No, I'm letting Mike have it.
Oh, okay. That's the kind of girl you are.
I think the bug got passed on this one. Uh, I'll let her chime in, uh, where she feels appropriate. As I say in my memo, and I'm going to touch on a number of the elements in there, just as kind of, uh, generally trying to hit the highlights is that, uh, both the city and the utilities commission, uh, uh, have been long-term participants in the, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for our property casualty and workers' compensation, going back from, uh, what Patty provided me to at, at least 1985. Uh, these programs have, uh, originally been designed and we've worked through our local insurance agent, uh, that being 2B Insurance. Um, as far as what Patty was able to get, we've been with, uh, uh, 2B Insurance with, on the city's behalf since about 1985 or 35 years. And the utilities commission since about 1990 or 30 years, based on, uh, that best available information. Um, although most of the cities, uh, in the program generally are involved in working with an insurance agent for their property casualty insurance, uh, we're recommending as part of, uh, what we're asking you to consider, uh, uh, on what we're proposing here tonight is that, uh, uh, we no longer feel that we, uh, need to, uh, procure, use the services of an insurance agent for our workers' compensation insurance. Uh, we pay a 2% commission on our work comp premiums, uh, to the insurance agent. Uh, but the way that things have changed, uh, uh, from going back from the very beginning to where we're at these days is that, uh, that information typically comes from the league, uh, to Patty, uh, in the finance office. Uh, we provide our, uh, updated estimate on payroll. We take a look at whether we want to have any changes in our deductibles or anything. Um, and then the calculation is pretty much there and we pay that and she provides that back to the league. We're not certain that, uh, we don't believe that we need to continue, uh, uh, providing, uh, a commission for that work, uh, because it's pretty much done electronically between the league uh, and our finance office. Um, in, in our review of what we're recommending tonight, uh, we want to, uh, acknowledge and make sure that we put forth is that, uh, uh, with what we are recommending, it's no reflection, uh, on the, the services and the assistance that we, uh, receive from, uh, uh, 2B, uh, the 2B Insurance Agency here in New Prague. As far as the work that they've done with us on the property casualty, uh, for renewals, claims handling, answering questions, uh, adding coverage throughout the year. Uh, but Patty has been, uh, has received inquiries from other insurance entities offering to provide the same services, uh, at yet, uh, an undetermined amount, but the belief is that it could be less than what we're currently paying right now. And so the intriguing part about these inquiries is that it could aid in, uh, assisting us in possibly reducing, um, our annual insurance, uh, commission expenses, uh, that we pay on our property casualty is, you can see in the next paragraph, is we, we pay a 10% commission to the insur- insurance agency of record on the yearly property casualty, uh, uh, for both property and casualty premiums. And what, what I tried to show you here a little bit is that in 2020, uh, the combined amount, uh, between the city and the, uh, utilities for our commission, uh, for property and casualty amounts to about $22,600, uh, and the work comp was, uh, about $2,800 for a combined commission of about a little over $25,000. When you compare that, we look back 10 years ago, uh, that amount, uh, was, uh, for the combined, uh, property and casualty and work comp was, uh, just under, uh, $20,000. And so we've seen that grow by a little over $5,000 in 10 years, uh, or about 2.7% annually. And so then when we look at the, the total premiums, uh, as a comparison, then what has happened with premiums, you can see for property and casualty and work comp in 2020 are about 365,000 versus 2010, uh, uh, they were about $274,000. And so we've seen them grow at a rate of about 3.3% a year. And i- in, in general, as we try to take a look at that, uh, as, as we look at various areas of the budget, uh, this is an area that really hasn't had any kind of, uh, uh, a review. And in the conversations that Patty has had and that I've had, uh, you know, there are different ways that we can take a look at, uh, paying that agent of record, whether it is a, uh, commission or whether it's a flat fixed rate, uh, based on an arrangement service or a, a process. Uh, we think that, uh, something could be done to, uh, likely, uh, reduce that. And in attempting to do this, as I said, it's no reflection on the quality of services that we received. Uh, but what it is, is it's an attempt to, uh, find out that what we are paying, um, how does that compare within the marketplace and is there a way that, uh, we can reduce that? So to address that, what we've talked about doing is trying to, uh, to use a request for proposals process, uh, to find out those, uh, entities that have contacted us and that are willing to provide similar insurance services. You know, what is the cost for that? And can we move to try to get the city to be able to pay a fixed cost so that it's not necessarily, uh, uh, inching upward with wherever our property and casualty might go. And so we think that that's a, a, a better, longer term solution than keeping it simply at the, uh, percentage basis for the, the commission. Uh, we have a draft RFP, uh, just about ready to go. Uh, it's being refined and could be deployed, uh, uh, next week if the council authorizes us to be able to send that out. Uh, in that, we'd recommend the deletion of the work comp as we think we're able to coordinate that renewal, uh, without any needed assistance. But what would happen if we go out with the RFP, what, what happens that, uh, you know, once proposals are received, uh, and evaluated, the, the council could have several choices. One could be is that we could simply choose to go with, uh, the lowest price vendor as the agent of record as we're not necessarily required to, uh, you know, this, this is considered kind of a professional service. We're not required to, to bid it or, or, uh, uh, solicit quotations. Um, the, the council can simply make a choice of, uh, what agency we want to be our agent of record. And then, uh, they would basically be the, uh, the point person with whoever we're procuring our insurance from. And in this case, it's the League of Minnesota Cities. Uh, they are the point person and are able to speak on our behalf as we interact with, uh, uh, the vendor of the insurances, uh, uh, on our behalf. Number two, that the council could continue to do business with the 2B agency at a new fixed annual rate as the agent of record, uh, for the, uh, property casualty, uh, based on their submittal, that we can compare that uh, and, uh, see whether that pricing has sufficiently, uh, uh, moved in the direction that we're hoping and we could compare that to others and, uh, to, to choose to stay, uh, right where we're at. Or thirdly, we could attempt after receiving that information to renegotiate with the 2B agency after all of the quotes are in and, uh, you know, take a look at that as to what's in our best interest. Uh, if, if the lower price quotes are lower than what the, the 2B insurance agents are, that if it's within a reasonable parameters, that obviously we'd rather keep the insurance local if economically that the pricing difference, uh, isn't, uh, anything of a significant dollar value. Because obviously the close proximity to our operations has value to the city. And so relatively negligible dollars, obviously we'd certainly recommend to, uh, uh, to keep it here. The, the challenge we have in taking a look at this is that we don't know exactly what that market looks like. Uh, it's not been explored to the best of my knowledge. It's not been explored to the best of my knowledge since we've been with the Tupi Insurance Agency. And so it's, it's kind of like going out and attempting to roll back the covers and find out what is kind of the going rate to handle and manage the services that go with having the property and casualty insurance. And so it's, it's simply our intent to take a look at that and find out what these other entities that seemingly think that they could provide those services and explore what, what we could get for a fixed pricing versus continuing to operate on a commission basis that, as I said, we've been with the Tupi Insurance Agency and generally all good for those 30 and 35 years. But looking at going forward, all we're proposing is that let's explore what's out there in the marketplace, see what that pricing is, and then evaluate that and determine what's in the city's best interest going forward since this really hasn't, has never been looked at.
Mike, my question is, in those 30 or 35 years, we've only had the insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities, correct?
Yes. One of the things that I didn't include that I think you're about to ask mayor that has been a strong benefit by being a member of the league and, you know, would be a piece that, I don't know if Patty has at her fingertips, but could provide, is what we receive back in dividends by being a part of the league program. That the league, after a number of years, they take a look at what their reserves are and their set of sides. And if they have claims covered and they have excess, they turn dividends back to the cities. And so I don't have anything in front of me that I can tell you exactly what the city of New Prague's dividends have been for both the city, the utilities, and the golf course by being a participant in the league program. So that's one of the benefits that exists with the league that doesn't necessarily exist when you go out and go directly with a private carrier. And I should point out that the one other insurance that isn't part of the league services that I mentioned in here is that we have to obtain a separate liquor liability policy for liquor at the golf course that is not provided under the league's program.
Well, my real question was, does the league insurance trust require us to have an agent?
Patty, you want to talk about that? I think you talked to them that it's...
Well, when I talked to the League of Minnesota Cities, they said it was in our best interest for property and casualty to have an agent, that all cities do. But they did say that for workers' comp, a lot of cities have opted out of that. And just mainly because of, like Mike had said, everything now is online and it's easier for us to do that.
Every year we have to, when we renew this with the league, that their information gets provided to the Tupi Insurance Agency, who then works with Patty and our staff to take a look at updating everything, making changes, trying to make sure that if we have questions about it, should this be insured, should that be insured? We're able to talk with Chuck Tupi and the agency to try to answer those questions and help with those things clarified or cleaned up before all that goes back to the league. So there is a benefit of service being provided by the local insurance agents.
Okay.
Mike, on the RFP, assuming this is included, but would we be asking for references from those other entities?
Yes. One of, one of the things we'd be asking for is for them to prove or provide information about their capabilities, their level of business, their ratings and all that kind of stuff. So that we're ensuring that we're not getting a fly-by-night agent that is comparable to the type of service that we're presently receiving.
So would we be able to reach out to those references for verification?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I did as well that I, I want to point out is that I did get to visit with Chuck on late Friday afternoon that I told him that I did not want him to learn of this discussion tonight, either secondhand through somebody that had been at the meeting or from some other business or from the newspaper or any of that nature. So I went and talked to him, explained what Patty and I are recommending and the process that we want to go through. They stated to Chuck that there is no reflection on the service that we have received. It's clearly wanting to take a look at the economic issue and to see if there's any potential to generate a savings in this area of our budget. So I did the visit with him and share this information and provided it to him on Friday.
I guess my opinion on this is that, I don't even know if it's really under the council. I think it should be part of the responsibility of, you know, the city departments that you should be looking at ways to save money and, and looking at things like this because everything changes every year. I'm not saying you want to change this, everything, but, you know, you always have to go out and shop around. You know, all businesses do that. And so the request an RFP, I mean, is fine, but, you know, I think, you know, from the standpoint of the city, the council's perspective, it, it should probably be handled at, you know, at the finance and the city administrator level.
Mayor, you're, you're normally absolutely pretty corrected on with that. However, in doing this, based on some of my past experience, the end result could end up being that we recommend or choose going with an alternative insurance agent as the agent of, of record. And in some cases, that can be a bit of a political hot potato in, in light of the fact that we have been with this insurance company or agency for the last 35, 30 years. Sometimes that doesn't sit well politically. And so I was looking by bringing this to you that yes, Patty and I could have done just exactly what you described. I just wanted to make sure that I had your blessing, that you were okay with us doing this and that we can proceed and will be able to do it. And we'll have a recommendation to you at a later date, but just wanted to make sure we had your cover and approval to move forward in this process.
Typically with a public entity, and I've seen this on RFPs that I work in my professional life, that many of the entities are required to go out RFP every three or five years. Annually, I think is kind of arduous and it's not something that I would recommend, but I would say having this on our radar every three years to go out to RFP just to ensure that we're in line in the marketplace.
My response to that is that the only statutory requirement we have under going out to RFP or something is with our health insurance every five years. It is not required necessarily for our property casualty insurance as we're dealing with here this evening.
Yeah, I understand by statute, but I'm thinking maybe of practicality that it would be a good thing for us to do as a city to periodically go out with RFPs for certain services, just because landscape does change and can change, you know, in that three-to-five-year period.
We were looking at in our RFP, trying to do a proposal for five years of what we had in ours that we're developing.
Okay, thank you.
So at least, so at least it wouldn't be 30 or 35 years when they next year.
Right. Yeah, I, I think it's just a prudent thing to do, you know, do our due diligence every three to five.
I'll just say I agree with Maggie, but I would like the opportunity to still keep it with Tupi Insurance if we can get closer, once we get other proposals back. I'd like to keep it local if we could, but if we're way out of whack, maybe we could give Tupi Insurance the alternative to renegotiate their fee.
Until we have numbers back and we're able to look at any of that, it's pretty tough to make a recommendation at this point. But obviously that's why I tried to outline that there are variable options once we receive that and with those numbers.
I agree. I would love to keep the business local. I'm not, you know, advocating for moving in any other direction. But oftentimes with RFPs, you know, we're asking or hopefully we're asking those that are bidding, that they give us our best, the best final offer. And I would have some hope that the agencies out there, the agents out there would have an idea of what the competitors are doing.
Do you have any comments?
This is Bruce.
Can you guys... Bruce, you've been so far.
Well, I don't know if Rick is trying to talk or not, so I can't tell.
Rick, are you trying to talk?
No. Well, yeah. I'm not sure what that says.
What does that say?
My comments are that I, I support the regular review.
Go ahead.
I support a, a regular review. It's good business practice.
It said yay, move it on.
Have regular review of certain items. I too would rather try to keep it local if possible, but it's in the city's, the community's best interest to have a regular review of this. And if it's not significant, try to keep it local if possible, support jobs and our tax capacity and all that type of thing. So, but I support this recommendation.
Okay. All right. Rick, now do you have anything else to say, to add?
We got to get this fixed.
Yes, Rick? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm trying to call you. You got it here? Are you there? Are you there? Yeah, just, all I wanted to say is I'd like to keep it local too, but if we can open it up for bids, then we can tell a little bit.
Okay, we hear that, Rick.
Did you get me, Mike? Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see, stay local, but let's open it up and see what happens. That's a, that's quite, quite a big bite, you know, 25,000 bucks, so. I, I would, I would move, I'd move the motion right now.
Okay, hold on. So any, we got a motion by Rick to go forward with the RFP, and second by Sean. Does anyone else have any other comments? Okay, well, we'll take a vote on it. Maggie?
Aye.
Uh, Rick?
Run mute.
Aye.
Okay. Johnny?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so. And I think...
I apologize, guys. We'll have to start, I'll start going down to the city hall and I'll do it in that meeting room because the reception here, we just can't get it out. These are all different machines that I got stuck with before, so.
Okay, we'll work on it. Okay, next on the agenda is the performance of city administrator Mike Johnson. At our last meeting, we had a closed, closed meeting, doing an evaluation for Mike Johnson. First, I'd like to apologize to Mike and to Patty for not getting this done more on a timely basis. I did promise everyone on the current council that I would have this out to people in November so we can do his evaluation in December with the current council because it makes more sense for the current council to do the evaluation for Mike on 2020 than to put a new council in place and then have to evaluate when some of them are, you know, that weren't able to work with Mike. So I, I've got that on my calendar and I'm going to leave up to Patty that if she doesn't hear from me, she slaps the tar out of me, so. But, but that's mine. Again, Mike's recommend, or Mike's recommend, Mike's evaluation was very positive again. I, I look back at the last couple, I, Mike, you'd be surprised. I got a big folder in my office at home and it's all about you since I've been mayor. So I'm just telling you, I, I got every, every council's going back to 2011, so. But as in the past, the council was in agreement that Mike is, is an asset to our community. He's done a great job guiding us through a lot of the situations that, that we do. You know, I feel he's, he's done a good job and I think he really has, most of his decisions are that he puts the city first and, and I think that's really important when you're in a position that he is in. So I'd like to congratulate Mike on another positive evaluation. I think it came out on a scale of five, 4.25. Last year it was 4.13, so obviously the last two councils have felt that Mike is, is doing a great job for the city and I'm going to miss him taking care of me when I, when I move on. But Mike, personally, I want to thank you for all the things you do for the city and all the things you've done for me as mayor, so congratulations.
Thanks and, you know, I appreciate the, the positive comments, but, you know, it is the quality of the group and the employees that I get to work with that helps us accomplish all of those items. So I didn't tell you that when you look at some of the people that we've got on the board here tonight, Glenn and Jim and Ken and Patty and Bruce isn't here today and, and then all of our other employees, Barb as well, I don't want to forget her down in the, in my corner over here, that it, it really is the opportunity to work with such a, a quality staff and being able to work with them to try to put together the options, alternatives, costs and the financing of things to make sure we deliver services to the residents of city of New Prague. And like, like I said, none of it would be possible without the assistance of all of their help as well. So thank you for that, mayor.
Okay. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mike's cost of living raise going retro back to January 1st. So that's my motion.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass on that motion. If there's no other comments. Okay, Maggie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick? Rick gave me a thumbs up. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck, aye. So passes 5-0. Again, Mike, thank you again from the council's point, but also from the citizens of New Prague for your hard work with the, what you get, what you have to put up with us sometimes.
Thank you, mayor.
So next, Jim, kind of give us a little COVID update.
I don't have a lot to update on. We continue to manage our workforce here in the city. With the governor's order the other day with the executive order 2081 with the mask. I missed the last council meeting, but I know you guys had some discussion about that. missed the last council meeting, but I know you guys had some discussion about that. And he did come through with the statewide executive order. So we've been just making sure that we have enough product on hand for the city. And once we move towards opening up city hall, that would, we'd have to provide additional masks here also, I'm assuming, for those that aren't able to bring one in. But then getting prices on other masks, disposable masks, we have some, some in stock yet from our N95s and KN95s, but I'll continue to work on that. I think the biggest issue here lately was the school, and to what degree they're going to open up and what platform. As of right now, it would be hybrid learning only for both elementary and secondary, based on the numbers. But we'll have to wait a couple of weeks before we can determine where the actual numbers are for that on the scale that the governor and his staff came out with.
Hey, Jim, Jim, a question. How do they determine that when our school district's in three different counties?
Um, you, well, based on that, they're supposed to pick the highest county that they serve in. Because you're bringing people from that area together, that's what they're supposed to do, is pick the highest number from the county.
Thank you.
Yep. Otherwise, I don't have a lot extra or additional. I know we've been in talks with the chamber regarding what they want to do to try and do something for Dozinki. I think it's very difficult at this time to try and put on any part of event, because we're still limited to 250 people on an outdoor gathering. So I think that'll be difficult unless something changes here in the near future for that. She did email me last week, we, we'll meet tomorrow as a staff and talk about, they inquired about doing a mini car cruise and, and doing food booths down at the park. But again, I think we'll, we'll open that discussion up with the staff tomorrow and then bring that forward. But, but honestly, I don't know that, again, the way executive orders are written right now, that that would function. I don't know how they would meter people to keep their crowds down. And because it's Dozinki, I think anything called Dozinki right now is going to get way too big a crowd that's appropriate for any event right now.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have that discussion and then continue to keep you informed then.
Jim, I have a question. At the last golf board meeting, the golf board was wondering, is it possible for them to go back to meeting at the golf course, being that they, you know, we could be on the second floor and be socially distanced, wear masks, type of thing? Do we need to have some kind of approval from you? Or how should we address that?
We did discuss that last week, and I think the most important thing about that is if they are open to the public, those meetings, then you would still have to allow for a video conferencing into that. So with that technology, you'd want to be able to do that, to bring, to bring the, the in-person meeting together with the video conferencing, so that the public is able to attend those, even though more than likely, you don't probably have too many public people show up for some of those. But that's been our discussion at the, at the city, that we have to be able to blend those technologies together, so that it, it appears semi-seamless for the in-person people that are meeting together and the public or video conferencing that are seeing those and can participate within that meeting also at the same time.
So some, somewhat of a hybrid type deal, you would have, just like one station would be, you know, in the, in the room, let's say one computer is in the room, or does everyone have to bring their computers to the room?
No, I think, I think whatever technology process you look at, but, and it could possibly be one camera that's up that, as long as it's picking up the audio that it needs to, may be enough to do that. I know Ken was working with CTS right now and was going to have a meeting. Is it this weekend?
Wednesday this week with CTS, and then an outside firm to try to get a better handle on an effective way to have, as Jim said, that in-person meeting and then blend in the online. And it, I don't know, CTS just didn't have the background on how to do that effectively. We had some ideas on how to do it, but then you'd have to have somebody sitting at the computer and kind of monitoring it. So we're going to explore other ideas that, and maybe it's just setting up equipment at city hall and having all the boards come here. I don't know. But Wednesday will have a much better idea of how that could work.
Okay. Thank you. Just keep me informed, so I can let the golf board know before the next meeting. And that is until like, end of August.
Yep.
Okay. Um, otherwise, that's all I have, unless somebody else has something.
Okay. Well, Jim, thank you for updating us, but also thank you for keeping the pulse on what's going on with the, the COVID. And I know it's not fun times for anyone, but I feel that New Prague seems to be doing fairly well. You know, like anything else, you get a few people that are not happy with what you do or don't do, or, but I think overall, it's, you know, I think we're managing pretty well through it, so.
I would agree, Mayor.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or any additions, questions or any, any issues that are in the consent agenda? The minutes or the payables or? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. If there's no questions or comments. Maggie?
Aye.
Okay, Rick? Give me a thumbs up, Rick. Did he freeze on me?
His thumb is up.
Okay. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck, aye. So 5-0. Okay, we're at the miscellaneous section.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Ken, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, other than tell Rick, we'll get you set up with a laptop and we'll, we'll get this taken care of. I don't know what, must be your internet in the building there.
Yeah, you know, we, we can do it in a conference room, I think.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it figured out.
They ain't gonna let me do it, so.
Yep, we'll, we'll get it worked out.
All right, thanks, Ken. Anything else?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
Okay. Jim, anything else?
Uh, no, just that email that you received last week. I had the officer make contact with that individual, and then I made contact with her today. She seemed fine with everything regarding that contact. So just to let you know, it's been taken care of.
Okay, appreciate that. Glenn, you got anything else to add?
I got nothing, thank you.
You got nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Barb, how about you?
No, I have nothing.
All right. Patrick?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. I see we have someone in, William Welsh. I guess he has just left, so I was going to see if he was something he would like to give. So we'll go to the council. Maggie, do you have anything else to add?
We don't, thank you.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, I got two little things. One, I had a neighborhood complaint on our, that property that's being developed on Lexington and 37, the Wim Dot property with the weeds growing out of control. He's only mowing a few feet in from the, around the property. Is that adequate? Or can we force him to mow the entire and keep those weeds down? It looks horrible.
Yep, I agree. He is going to be mowing tomorrow or Wednesday, and if he does not, the city will have it mowed on Thursday. So that is the deadline.
Great. Can we require him to keep that, to mow that at least once a week, or?
We can't require that. We just have, he has to keep it, obviously, 12 inches or lower. The other thing to keep in mind, he's got some work in the boulevard there that I think is part of the city project. Glenn, is that correct yet? That hasn't been completed?
Uh, yeah, it was with Bevcom, I believe.
No, I mean, the, the black dirt and the seeding from the street project.
That seeded.
So there's still that too. So you'll probably see some work being done for that eventually. He's been complaining about that, but we finally just had to say, hey, look, get your lot taken care of here, and we're going to keep on him. He obviously had the letter. The problem is when, when we send the letter out and then, you know, they comply, we start the clock over again every time. And with him, he milks it to the very end. But if it's not done by Thursday, we're mowing it this week, so.
Okay, great. I'll let the residents know.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean. I just had a question, question about, is that lot under new ownership, relatively new ownership, or the same old?
Same.
That's it, okay.
How, my other question, or other part of that question is, how long does that conditional use permit last? I mean, is that something that we can threaten them with? If we?
Oh, you mean the variance?
Or the variance, excuse me.
Uh, no, it's good for the life as long as he would comply with what was obviously approved and recorded by the council. So no, I can't really use that as a negotiating point.
Okay, so every time it gets 12 inches, we have to send him a letter and then he milks it till the very end?
Yep, unfortunately. And we have, we have a few property owners that tend to do that. But we work through it. It's easier if they don't comply and then we mow it, then we just keep mowing it. But in this case, he always does enough to restart the clock, unfortunately.
Anything else, Sean?
Yeah, I got one more thing. This weekend, i- is it true that the University of Duluth is getting water samples, Glenn, from the water treatment plant looking for COVID?
And it's true, yep. They asked us along with a bunch of other wastewater plants that is actually was asked through Messer organization that we're a part of, if anybody would volunteer for a study that they got federal grant money for, to test wastewater and looking for COVID-19. So yes, we are, we are participating in that. And once they have some kind of numbers to say, yes, it's there, no, it's not, you know, it was, it was a great success, it didn't turn out to be as good as we thought, type deal, we will get those results, but they don't have anything yet.
Oh, okay, that's, that was my next question. Or what, with the tracking, is there some results that we can see and like, is it increasing or it's decreasing or?
They're, obviously, they're, they're, they're testing and their documentation isn't that fast. So they must, from what we were told, is they're going to do a number of tests for a period of time and then compile that information and then see if it's worth going farther, testing longer, more tests, less tests, things like that. So it's so new to them that they said, you know, don't expect anything for months.
Okay.
We're not sure what we're going to find, if any.
Okay, but you'll share that with the council when you get, if you get those numbers?
Definitely will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That was it.
Okay. Bruce, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to follow up with Ken on the comprehensive plan. Now, follow up question on that. I understand we update that normally every five to 10 years. When is the next time we're updating the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so we don't have a specific timeframe in order to update it. We've got it noted in the comp plan to do it every five to 10 years. You know, we've got enough land, I believe, in our planning boundary, which is up to the year 2035, that there's no immediate need to do that. But I would imagine, so it's 2012 was when we did the land use plan. So probably 2022 would be a good point to revisit that, is what I would recommend.
This issue that came up today with Tocolskis, and really, there's new information since the last update, I understand, that kind of changed the thinking, that really supported this idea of a change. But are there other locations that we should revisit then that because of flood plain, flood plains, or something that, you feel our comprehensive plan is kind of up to date, or does it need to be refreshed?
Yeah.
It's kind of unusual to me to see a change like this, to go from commercial to residential, you know, that, that's not typical.
No, it's not typical. And I think, you know, looking back at the redevelopment section of the comp plan on, on those areas where we said it could go from residential, which it's owned right now, to commercial, there wasn't the information. We didn't have two-foot contour elevation data. We didn't have, obviously, the wetland delineation done. And then this new FEMA information, which isn't adopted yet, I should note, by FEMA, but it is used as what they call best available information. So that's what FEMA and the DNR are saying, use that for the preliminary plat. And, you know, it, it's still in the approval process here. So coupled with, that should be approved. I don't have an exact timeframe. I think 2021 is when they're trying to get the FEMA stuff done, which covers all of New Prague, not just the Sura County side, but all of New Prague will have the new FEMA mapping layer. And then with census information is usually a good other part to go with that. So we'll be getting that data, they've been telling us, in 2021 throughout the year. And we'll get anything from just your straight census data on up through, you know, the different age cohorts and all that other data as well. So that's usually good to wait till we have the census data to do the update as well.
But I think in the past, some of the thinking in the past was that we'll look at the railroad line and then kind of look at that as being commercial or industrial and kind of follow industrial, the railroad tracks. But I, I kind of wonder then about the railroad tracks going north, whether that's really, should be commercial too, and kind of look at that and all that part of it. So it kind of calls other areas into question now that we've done this one, but.
Yeah, and I think the other change from the land use plan is we obviously had the city entering into the development, came with the industrial park, developing some of that, just reexamining all the developed percentages of different uses we have and make sure it's just meeting where we want to go long term. So I've been kind of eyeing 2022 with that. And I'm just basing that off, in 2012, we had our census information by that time. So it was just a good, it gives, gives some time so we could get all the information and have a good baseline and go from there. And it's really nice too, because we can kind of piggyback on Scott County's comp plan for the countywide, and they've already done transportation planning for the whole county. And we can, we can piggyback on that and kind of save a little bit of that trouble too, so.
What's interesting, as a case like this today, is the Tocolskis were involved in the process in the past a number of times. So this idea of changing it was, was something, the way it was designated in the past is something they agreed with in the past.
That is correct.
So, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Bruce?
No.
Okay. Rick, do you have anything?
Let's hope not.
Well, if you do, Rick, save it for the next meeting. When we get you different digs, okay? Uh, the only thing I want to bring up is kind of, you know, I know we're getting close to our budgets time of year, which always makes us accountant, so I always feel like we have some fun. But I just hope, Mike, from at least my perspective, I'm kind of concerned with the uncertainty of the delinquencies of property taxes, you know, the second half. And then if this COVID thing continues into the next year, you know, the delinquency rates of property tax in the first half next year. So, you know, I think we got to, as a, as a city, make sure that we kind of have some kind of contingencies in place to kind of make sure that we're, we can be proactive rather than reactive to. to kind of make sure that we're, we can be proactive rather than reactive to some of these potential problems, so that's the only thing I want to bring up to you, Mike, is you know, I'm sure our assessed values are probably gonna go up, but the piece that kind of concerns me is, is the delinquency rates may also go up because of the COVID, so. That's just more of a personal on-take of, of the budget process, but I'm sure you guys are, as always, are being very conservative in your departments. I know Glenn is. You know, that's, that's what I always like about Glenn, he only gets what he wants, but that's all I wanted to bring up, so. There's nothing else? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I had one, just a reminder that I hope that the chainsaw isn't making too much noise on my back door here, that filing.
Coming after you, or what?
Filings for elective offices for the mayor and council will be running for another week, that they do close on Tuesday, August 11th, at 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you for the update. We did talk about that on the radio show. So. And I did kind of give my input on, you know, people trying to, hopefully get some people involved, because it, it is fulfilling, you know? And I think everyone on the council probably can agree with that, I mean, yeah, there is some headaches, but it's kind of nice to be part of a, a group that is, is leading our community to bigger and better things, so.
And for the, for the public, we have three positions, one being the mayor's two-year term, and then we have two council member openings that are four-year terms.
All right. If there's nothing else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. I think we can just do a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Give me a thumbs up. All right. Passes 5-0, thank you, everyone, be safe, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Have a good night.
Good evening, everyone.